Everyone, thanks for joining us today. I call this meeting Pantram City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 28, and it's 7:02 PM. Would the clerk call the roof, please?
Councilman Fai?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Sedman?
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Please rise for the first committee. All right, thank you. Do we have any committee announcements?
We do. Mr. Mayor, Council, on the 4th, the Subcommittee for the Parking Contract is going to meet right here in this chamber. I believe it's at 6 o'clock. We are in the process of not only personally going to all the businesses affected by it, each and every one of them, but we're also mailing flyers and also calling them so that everyone is aware of it. On the same day, at 5:00 PM, we're going to have a town hall for the residents affected by the Goodson Project as well, just to try and get a jump on that, to explain to some of them residents what's about to happen with the, basically, Goodson being torn out for an extended period as well. So, I think that's all I had. Were there any questions?
All right. Is there any other announcements? We move to Proclarations, Recognizations, and Presentations, and we have the first one, Proclamation allowing memory of Angeline Rooks. Do you like to read it?
I have it posted online, and it's up to you. I'll read it if you'd like.
Does the family here?
I don't believe so.
No? Okay, then, because I have it here.
We can, we'll get it to them.
Yeah. I'll mail it to them.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is another proclamation for the Black History Month, and then we have a proclamation for War with Hijab Day, and then we have presentation by UHY on Pantram City's Annual 2024 Audit. Do we have anyone to present that?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Let me give you yours from your office. You don't want me working, huh?
Yes. It's a non-happy day.
Okay, is it the...
Hold on, let me just put it up for you.
All right. Thanks for work, guys. I said, "Good evening, my name is Marlene Beach. I'm the principal at UHY." This is Mark Bichel. And Mark was the manager in charge of the audit. As opposed to going through the financial statements as we normally do, we've set up a PowerPoint presentation to kind of hit some of the high points. Accounting standards require that we provide you guys with certain administrative matters regarding our work. As I said, we prepared this summary of it. The financial statements are the property of the city. The only thing that is ours is the report. Our report does say we audited the financial statements of the city, the governmental activities, the business activities, and the component unit, each major fund, and the remaining fund information of the city as of and for the year, June 30, 2024. Also includes the related notes to the financial statements. As you'll notice, that the notes get longer and longer every year. The financial statements, the actual statements themselves, take up probably about a third. The rest is your financial statement notes. As detailed in our auditor's opinion, we did issue an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the highest opinion we can give. Accounting standards require that we provide you with certain information. We did provide an engagement letter at the start of the audit. Management's responsible for the selection of the accounting policies, and those are detailed in Note 1 to the financial statements. There was a new GASB this year, accounting changes and error corrections. The city did adopt that as of July 1, 2023. The city does make certain estimates. As part of our audit procedures, we evaluate the reasonableness of these estimates, and the most extensive estimate in the city's financial statements was the pension and OPEB liability, the creasable lives of the property and equipment also. We did have a few journal entries that was provided to management as part of the audit. They were made, so the financial statements were done and completed at the end of the audit. We're not aware that the financial statements are being concluded with any other documents aside from the single audit report, which does get submitted to the federal audit clearinghouse. We're pleased to report there were no disagreements with city management. I mean, everything, they were great. They had things ready for us. One of the things we look at during our audit is the speed which we get information back, and everything came back extremely timely, which means everything was, they were ready for us, they were prepared, they had the documentations that we asked for. There were no issues discussed with management prior to our appointment. Now I'm going to go through a few graphs. As I said, this is just kind of a highlight of the financial statements. The key fund of the city, as you're well aware, is the general fund, and if you look at '23 to '24, the sizes of the pies are almost identical. Cash and equipment was 69% last year, and it's 70%. Receivables are about 3.4 mil, or 27%. Last year, they were 28%, so almost identical numbers. Receivables are just a function of time. If we'd have done the audit four days later, you know, the receivable balance would have, could have been different. So it's just a matter of when things come in. A lot of that had to do with grants and amounts that were due from the state of Michigan. So the assets are what you own, the liabilities are what you owe, and the fund balance is the remaining. Families and other pools, once again, it's kind of like receivables. It's a function of when the audit takes place. Last year, they were 20%. This year, they're 21. Again, we're looking at very consistent numbers year over year. One thing you want to look at is your fund balance on restricted. That means the funds that are available for the city to use for general purposes. Last year, they were 70%. This year, they're, excuse me, last year, they were 71%. 2024, they're 70%. Again, very comparable numbers. Fund balance was $9 million. Fund balance this year was about 8.7, and that's just a function of expenses in excess of revenues this year. This slide shows the general fund revenue. The big difference you're going to see on this one is on 2024, as you look at grant revenue of a little over $16 million. This was the money that you received from the state of Michigan for the pension grant. So that did skew, you know, the sizes of the pies from year over year. So if we look at the next slide, this is the, this is the general fund revenues. We just took out that $16 million just to, for comparability's sake. Property taxes last year were $7.6 million. Property tax revenue was up considerably this year to 8.4. State shared revenue was also up. Annualized income tax had a substantial increase. Property tax was 32% last year and has about 35 this year. Income tax were 15. Income tax this year was 19%. Because the revenue was, we had that grant revenue, we also have the associated expense. So that's why you see the change in public safety. We had $13 million last year, 31 this year, but once again, we did a slide, we took out that grant revenue, the grant expenditures. Public safety was 13.5 last year and about 14.7 this year. 66% was down to 59. General government was about 5.2 last year and approximately 7.9 this year. Another fund we'd like to highlight is Water and Sewer Fund because it's one of the largest funds in the city. Sale of water last year was just a little bit over $4 million. This year, you're looking at about 4.6. So its disposal charges last year were 4.9, and this year, they're up to 5.7. So you've got a great increase in revenue in the Water and Sewer Funds. There was substantial grant revenue this year. It was $2 million last year, and this year, again, it's 4.4. So anytime you have an increase in grant revenue, we expect to see a grant, increase in grant expense where you're spending it. Loss of the sewer treatment last year was about $4 million. This year's just a little over 4.3. Operations and maintenance, this is where the grant funds would flow through, so you have 2.7. This year, they're about $7 million. So once again, you had grant revenue, so you're going to see those related expenses that go with it. I'm sure the city was also subject to a single audit. A single audit is conducted anytime your federal expenditures, which is expenditures of federal revenues, exceed $750,000. We had one major program that we tested, and that was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Next year, the limit is going up to a money, but the city did have, does have Eagle Grants for next year, so there will be, more than likely, will be a single audit again next year. One of the things that you do as, as part of a single audit, you look at the internal controls of the city. This was done for a basis for designing our audits, but it was not for the purpose of expressing opinions, so accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control. There's two types of findings. One's a material weakness, one's a significant deficiency. These are just the definitions of both. There was one financial statement audit finding this year that was related to segregation, excuse me, segregation of duties related to banking. That issue was resolved before the audit was complete. It was, so there was access to the banks that one person could do more than, more than just one portion of the banking, so the person could input and also approve. That has since been remediated, and now you have a great segregation of duties in your banking, which means one person cannot both approve, cannot input and approve banking. So you think it requires two people to do ACHs, two people to do wire transfers. As I mentioned, that was corrected prior to the end of our audit. And that is the basis for our presentation. Does anybody have questions on anything that I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Yeah, I just want to quote you. If I want to reboard with this, for assistance, like, for five years, can we make a reboard?
Pardon me?
If I make a reboard, if I want a reboard for, like, from 2019 till now?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to see the report? Reboard. For five years, like?
For five years. For the, for me, in the, in the report itself that we prepare?
This is a year, and then for five years. How's it going?
No, and actually...
The willing and hunting is high. Can we make a reboard?
The report itself, no, has, GASB does not allow that. GASB, GASB...
Not allowed to make a reboard?
We're not allowed to make a five-year report.
Separate?
The separate years, each...
From 2019 till now?
Yeah, each of those reports is available on the city council.
You can, you can look at every year past. I mean, everything's on Board docs.
Yeah, I need to see that one.
Yeah, those are available on the city website. They're also available, they're available on the state of Michigan website.
Director can give it to you.
Yeah, it's on, it's on Board docs, Council. I mean, you can go back and look all the way.
I need to make it in my hand. So you want to print it for you?
We just print it for you.
Yes.
One question. Do you have any concern of any major finding of this audit?
We did not. The only, the one finding we did have was segregation duties, and that has been corrected. So there were other than that, we had no recommendations and no findings, so.
So I see the, the maintenance, pollution maintenance, there are little daily funds from last year, '23 to '24. You say grand money will cover most of them. So any other slide I didn't see, but you say you take off that?
Yeah, anytime, there was, there was a lot of grant money this year, so anytime we see grant revenue, we also expect to see the grant, you know, expenditures go up because you're spending your grant funds. So that is, that was an, that was an expected thing, correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is the Fire Department Annual Report, please.
We have a fire chief here for this, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Are you ready to roll in?
No, hold on.
All right, so this is our year-end report for 2024 for the Fire Department. Our staffing for the year remained consistent. In 2024, we had one firefighter resign, and we had, the position was filled immediately. So we are full staffing. That includes one chief, one fire marshal, two captains, four lieutenants, six motor engineers, and 12 firefighters. Part of our job with the, with the Fire Department is community risk reduction. Among that, the duties there is fire inspections, smoke alarm installation, CO monitor installations, pre-incident walkthrough, school surveys, our school fire protection surveys, and community events. As far as inspection activity, our fire marshal handles those. He does all the business inspections for the, for the city. This year, we had a slight decrease in inspections and, or actually, re-inspections, which means that he's being more effective, and as he comes back to the businesses, they're, they're complying, and the codes are being met, so we're getting, we're getting safer through his actions. He has managed to make it to every business in the city, about two years consistently, and that's a big step for us, and it's a big step for our, for IES already. As far as...
Don't play it, dude.
Yeah.
It's not working.
Okay.
Jump light. All right. As far as smoke, smoke alarms installed, we had 141 installed or distributed this year as at tracks with last year. CO alarms were 37, were down slightly, but we only, we deliver only one of those per every household when requested.
Try it one more time.
We do, we did 24 pre-incident walkthroughs. This is when our crews go out and visit local businesses. We get everybody in there to learn the layouts and the hazards of the buildings. We're on track to probably double that this year. We're, we're making an effort to get out more into the community, see what's in, what is in the businesses, make sure the hazards are known so everyone's safer. We had four school visits this year. Two school groups came out to the, to the department to visit us. We had our annual Chunk and Treat with the police department, and other city officials came out, and everyone had a great time. We had beautiful weather that night. Their open house, touchy truck event, we had, our DPS came out and got to show off all their trucks. Okay, as far as responses for last year, 2024, we had 865 responses. This included 14 structure fires, nine vehicle fires, 99 careless cooks, 36 other fires, 68 reports of wires down, and 38 car accidents. We entered, we rendered aid to Detroit 240 times, to Highland Park 49. We received aid from Detroit 35 times, and aid received from Highland Park was 18. A big part of our job, along with the CRR and responses, is training and education. We do, we have two probation, or two probationary firefighters currently, so we spend a lot of our time training them, getting them up to speed, going through firefight operations. We were fortunate enough to do live fire training at Detroit's Regional Training Center. We did this back in October. It was a big success for the guys. We're going to get scheduled to get back out there again. We've been working through our EMS recertification. All members of the Fire Department are basic EMT or paramedic, so we have that certification. We do our administrative training every year, which is required by law. We did some ladder training and ventilation training with the structure right here before the city demolished it. It's a great opportunity for our guys. This is, this is a skill that you don't get to do very often, is actually, get on a roof live, cut, do, do the skill that you would do normally in an ideal H atmosphere. These guys got to do it in the safe and practice their techniques, which was a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity for us. As always, we have our driver and pump training. This is continuous through the year. All of our drivers have to meet a certain standard of training every year, and they have to have so many driving hours. Way back, we do our extrication training. This is some of the video or pictures from us. We combine training with a equipment evaluation. We're looking to purchase new equipment and upgrade what we have, and we use that as an opportunity to get some training for our guys. Forest voluntary training. We are fortunate to, to purchase this with the police department last year. We did some training. We had Rise Above Training came in and did a class on forest voluntary over two days for us. And we also use the new DPS building that they're going to be going through. We used it to our, for our opportunities and did some search training in there. This year, we were able to purchase five sets of turnout gear, which is a coat and pants for our firefighters. The cost for each set is approximately $3,500. That was budgeted for. Then last year, we received a grant for 12 sets of turnout gear, which are ordered. They should be here shortly. We have, we received a second grant to receive 24 sets of turnout gear, which will give our firefighters two sets of gear for the first time ever. That is the industry standard. That way, if anything happens to their gear, gets wet during the winter or becomes contaminated with flood, they have a second set of gear to use. We also ordered, we had budgeted for two SCBA harnesses, two cylinders, and 10 masks. We made the purchase here, and as part of that grant, we were able to purchase four additional harnesses, 10 SCBA cylinders, and 10 SCBA masks. So what this has given us is the opportunity to give all of our members new masks this year. It's very important. We can beat up pretty bad in the fire, and it's, we're glad that we were able to replace all these this year. We're also doing an ongoing evaluation, like I said, to replace our extrication equipment, and we have several grant opportunities out to purchase some new radios for the department. As far as apparatus and maintenance costs, this year, we had two major, two major expenditures in that area. The repair for our area, we needed a new swivel, so it was down at Sudford for eight months while they had to remanufacture the parts. And then unfortunately, we had to put a new engine in one of our pumpers, so that kind of inflated our, our costs this year for maintenance. Hopefully, we're back on track. And then we have placed the order for the new pumper. We received the, the special grant from the state of Michigan, which is allowing us to make this purchase. We have our pre-built meeting scheduled for February 18. We should be seeing the rig in about 26 months. I talked to the rep today. He's hoping they're pushing a little closer, so hopefully, that'll be moved up a little bit. We'll get it sooner than that, maybe by a month or two, but we'll take it, we'll take what we can get there. EMS, we are now licensed and equipped to provide medical first responder service with our engines. We began doing this service in December. We've done training with AmeriPro. So currently, the plan is we are backing up AmeriPro, and we are, we are making sure that there aren't extended response times. If they're tied up on another run, or if they need assistance, our engines are going out and helping. So that's, that's rolled out. So far, it hasn't been too busy, but it's good. Since AmeriPro made the switch over to the new company, they've been pretty good with response times, and they have more rigs on the street, so that's helpful for us. For our hydrants, we do three things going on with those, annual inspections, hydro paintings, and hydro cap coating. The coating is, we're doing that to, to develop a system to rapidly identify where the water mains are, or what color, what the color corresponds to the size of the water main. So the larger the main, the different colors we know. With all the work going on in the city, we're going to be, this is going to be an ongoing process for us. We need to update our numbering system. We have to do a lot of stuff there. GM cares did come in. They painted about 200 hydrants for us this, this summer. It was a great success. We're, hopefully, they're going to come back this year, do some more work for us. We have run into some, some snags with the, with the fire hydrants, with all the, with all the construction in town. It's made it challenging. We do have a lot of new hydrants going in and new water mains going in, so at the end of all the construction, we are going to be in a much better place as far as water supply throughout the city. So we're working through it. We're, we're staying with it with the DPW. We're making sure the hydrants are in service. We're making sure everything's good, and we'll continue to do so in the next year. Lastly, talk a little bit about emergency management. We began doing some training with Michigan State Police and Wayne County Department Homeland Security Emergency Management. We've been updating the Pantronic Emergency Operating Plan, developing our, continuing about continuity of operations plan and our continuity of government plan. We've met with Detroit and Wayne County Homeland Security. We're starting to build some, build some relationships for them, with them, meeting everybody, just trying to get more involved in what's going on in our region. We attend the quarterly meetings for Homeland Security. We participated in Wayne County's Preparedness Plan Update. What this does is gets us, if a major disaster were to hit the city, we're part of the plan, so we would be included and ready for, and ready to receive federal funding if needed. And we've participated in a plant, in a tabletop exercise in Plant Zero. Any questions?
Yes. Harness, do you have anybody do the inspection, or we do internal?
We do, for our SCBA harnesses, they're inspected and flow-tested annually, so the company, we have a company that comes out, flow tests them, and certifies them every year. Any other questions?
You have a keep ring, free fire alarm for the P2?
Yes, we have free smoke alarms and CO alarms available at the Fire Department. If anyone needs them, just contact us, and we'll come out and install them for you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we move to the additions and additions. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I want to bring a motion to add to agenda, rise for city manager, in the amount, city manager's salary in the amount of 15%.
Second.
All right, can we vote on adding this to the agenda?
Yes. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
No.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
So you're bringing this for discussion, or?
No, we're voting.
To bring it on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, to put it up.
Bring it to the agenda, yes.
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I will be adding Resolution 2025, 2025 13 to increase city manager's salary by 15% to New Business E.
All right.
I'd like to make the motion to approve that as amended.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. On favor?
Hi, I'm... May I ask?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to ask if they're on favor?
Hi. Is there any votes to this?
Votes.
One vote. Any? Just one? Okay.
No, two.
Two.
Councilman El Samiri and Councilman Fai.
All right, so...
So it does go on to the agenda?
All right.
So the agenda's approved.
All right, so we'll discuss that when we get there. And so we move to the public comments now.
Abraham Al-Jahin?
Good evening, everyone. In the past three or four council meetings, I've been bothered by the emails sent about residency. So the, the city has, gave you guys phones. I don't know why the city don't have, tell you guys, open your location on your phone, and they know who lives in the city and who doesn't. And also, I would like the council mayor to do a resolution regarding the emails. People that send fake emails, do a resolution to, to make sure the phone number, the address, and the name, and the clerk has to verify if the email is fake or not. Second point, vacation. if the email is fake or not. Second point, vacation. I would like to know who paid for Chief Taheri's vacation and the mayor and the three councils that went to Washington. Can I get an answer, please? Was it city paid, or was it personal, for the mayor, the chief, and the council members?
Chief.
No answer?
We can answer.
So there was a trip to Washington that the city did cover for the elected officials. The chief did not attend that, but that was a sponsored trip.
Okay, the chief's trip to Kuwait. Was it, did the city pay for it, or he paid for it?
That was not in the city funds.
So was, so he paid for his own?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure. And six, I mean, sorry, the third point. I had six, but I took off three. I would like to congratulate our Honorable Senator Alyssa Slotkins and Congressman Sri Tanadar and State Rep Tanya Myers Phillips, also our Wayne County Commissioner Martha G. Scott under win the past election. Today, as we heard from the news, Senator Gary Peters, he won't seek reelection in 2026. We thank him for his service since 2014. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer?
Hello, everyone. Just when I thought I didn't have to come to council meetings anymore, I watched the last meeting two weeks ago, and it was shocking. It was a really despicable display of animosity between fellow workers, between council members. This sort of stuff doesn't help the city. You have business to do. You have to work together. And there's several things that went wrong at the last meeting. I hope you can avoid that in the future. Adding last-minute items to the agenda that are going to cause controversy like that should be dealt with ahead of time and discussed among council members. Decide if you want to put an agenda, not public. Many things should be done in a closed meeting, especially when you get into personal stuff like you did at the last meeting. There were attacks, personal attacks on people, especially the city manager who, and a few of the council members, unsubstantiated statements, not proven. You can't just throw out stuff without facts. This sort of stuff creates gossip in the city and tarnishes our image. I mean, I've been, this city's been running very smoothly for a long time. That's why I stopped coming, because I'm so thrilled at how everything's working. I didn't know there's all this stuff going on underneath the top level there, that this is animosity between people in their communities. I guess it's not to be not expected. You have personal lives, and you relate to each other outside of government. But you shouldn't bring that to government meetings. And the last council meeting was just horrible. We have a journalist, we have like a yellow journalist here in town with this newspaper, who just loves sensationalism and loves exaggerating what's happening. We got to avoid feeding the paper with this sort of stuff, or anybody else, or the public. I think Max is doing a great job, first of all, and I don't know if there's going to be challenges against it. I think the whole council should come out and have an open address, and he should be able to defend himself. I happen to be thrilled with the way these meetings have been going up till last time, and the fact that he brings all the department heads here, and they answer the questions, and things are going well, and seem to be great working environment here in the building. And I think what's happening is personalities, personal problems, personal arguments we've had in our own communities have gotten in the way. We've got to rethink about that twice. I do think Kelly Oak is good to be put into, moved into this position to be possible, mayor in the event that we lost our mayor. And I think that's one of the reasons we had problems at the last meeting, because everyone thought we were going to panic here, and we're going to lose our mayor, who is a shining example of how a mayor should be.
Thank you, Bill.
Got to get on the minute. Our mayor is skilled tremendously at this sort of stuff, is steering something like a sinking ship last meeting, and steered us through the rough waters and got us out of the meeting alive. He understands the purpose of unity and working together. That's the only way the city's going to go forward. You have to work together. You can't accusing each other of stuff, personal stuff. Take your, keep your personal stuff out of the public meetings if you can. Sleeping in a meeting, I don't think is as serious as someone who doesn't read all the documents that are supposed to be read for meetings, and shows up with some sort of questions, some sort of answers, and starts contributing to the discussion and coming up with, developing the best thing for the city. I think just coming and sitting at a meeting and not doing anything is not, is not really what we're, we elected officials for.
Thank you, Bill.
So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to thank Greg for taking videos. We got nice videos of our council meetings. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abdul Latif?
You can speak in Arabic all the time.
Salam alaikum. I'm Al-Jahim. I'm here to address the resolution that was passed last meeting in regards to the alley called Roosevelt and Gitsen by Councilman Samiri. And a few things. One, I understand that there's a lot of alleys that require a lot of work, and I am, and hopefully we get to all of them. But one thing is the Roosevelt Alley and the Gitsen Alley are the main alleys that are accessible to our parks, where our kids, our family, you know, go to. They're pretty unsafe to walk even on them. Not even, you know, driving is okay, but you're messing up your car. But even walking on them is really dangerous for little kids. Second of all, it's downtown Hamtramck. This is where BCFC, where outsiders come into our city and walk through those alleys to get into the parks. Don't we want to attract other, you know, coming to our city, looking beautiful and stuff? So, third, you know, thing is, that I'd like to address is, I've complained about this issue as a resident since 2020. I had some sewer done behind my house in Roosevelt, and I pulled permit and all that, and got the work done, but contractors never finished the work to where they paved the alley. So there's a big, you know, hole in the alley behind my house. I emailed the city, addressed it with them. Matt's been really cooperative, working with me and getting DPS out there to patch these holes and stuff, but they only last so long. Why is the city doing the work? Why can't we get the contractors to come back and do the work? I just don't understand, you know? I've been patient. Is four years enough of waiting? If it's, you know, the resident have a ticket, they're going to fix it. They're going to find a way to fix it, or you're going to get fined. For us residents, we got to wait? How long do we got to wait? It's four years. We had the opportunity, that resolution was brought up, that could have been taken care of. And like I said, the main points, downtown Hamtramck, that's right there, where outsiders come in, and at the same time, accessible to our parks, both to the renovated baseball field and to Keyworth Stadium as well, and to the basketball field. So I'm asking, on behalf of mayor, councilmen, if you can please reconsider, maybe re-motioning, and try to bring that resolution back and vote for it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
On the agenda today is the approval of the 1.5 million year mark from the state of Michigan. My hope was that the subcommittee would, consistent with Councilman Rafai, Samiri, and Musa, would meet here, hopefully in the next week or so, to try and hash out exactly which alleys we're going to do with that 1.5. We do have another one on the horizon too, that we're anticipating getting. So I'm optimistic that we're going to get most of the alleys that the councilmen have signaled, maybe not all of them, but most of them, and we can see what we can do, and then obviously we'll work. Those alleys that the gentlemen pointed out are actually on those lists already. So I'm very optimistic that within, maybe not this year, but pretty soon, those will happen.
Thank you. What, can I ask a question?
Not really.
Not really, sorry.
Maybe after, you can communicate.
Derek Hill, did you want to speak now? We have a mark at the end of the meeting.
Just two seconds.
Did you want to?
Yes.
Come on. You have three minutes.
Good evening to the city council and the mayor and all the department heads. My name is Derek Hill. I'm a legislative assistant to Commissioner Martha G. Scott. I know I've been to a number of meetings, but I just wanted to introduce myself to you. If there's anything that the commissioner can do for the city of Hamtramck or its residents, please feel free to contact our office at 313-224-0878. And then also, yesterday, we had a very successful coffee hour at the Main Street Restaurant. And the commissioner has those coffee hours every month in Hamtramck at Main Street. And I would like to invite everyone here or council to come. And we have our next coffee hour on February the 24th at 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM over at the Main Street Restaurant. So I'd love to, you know, if you have any concerns or issues relating to county government, you know, I'd love to see you there and have some breakfast with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, we have.
I have one email from Charles Blackwell. Good evening, Hamtramckans. Mayor Gallup should face public criticism for ICE raids that occur in Hamtramck. Mayor Gallup fully endorsed and supports President Trump's cruel and unusual immigration policies. And then I did get an email from Angela Gonzalez regarding the parking meters. I just want to let, make it public notice that we do have the town hall meeting on Tuesday, so she wants to take her comment there. I don't know if she missed in the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to make a note of that again. So if anybody has any comments in regards to public meters or parking meters, next Tuesday here at 6 o'clock.
I believe that one came after the deadline.
Correct, yes. It came after the deadline, but I just wanted to point that out. And that's all for public comment. All right, thank you. You can wait until you do the report, maybe.
I just want to address Brad's question. So we were invited as state officials to the inauguration. So we represent the city when we go there. Last year, we were invited to the White House during Biden administration as elected officials as well, all of us here, except Councilman Khalil wasn't, he was overseas, and the same thing happened. Every time the council, the elected officials go to a meeting, an MML meeting or something or a conference, the city pays for them. I have been avoiding all these meeting and conferences to save money for the city. I never went to any of them, except maybe one in the first year, because I found that they are not very productive. I can learn on my own more than attending and wasting time there. So I save the city a lot of money when I don't go for the hotel, for the trip, or for the course. We don't get paid in vacations like the chief gets, you know, for the city manager. So we get like, every city council member gets $240 a month. They still want them to pay for these events and stuff. That's not fair. And when we ask for rates for the city elected officials, the residents did not approve it for them. So that's why we can't find people running for the and getting DPS out there to attach these holes and stuff, but they only last so long. Why is the city doing the work? Why can't we get the contractors to come back and do the work? I just don't understand, you know? I've been patient. Is four years enough of waiting? If it's, you know, the resident have a ticket, they're going to fix it. They're going to find a way to fix it, or you're going to get fined. But us residents, we got to wait? How long do we got to wait? It's four years. We had the opportunity, that resolution was brought up, that could have been taken care of. And like I said, the main points, downtown Hamtramck, that's right there, where outsiders come in, and at the same time, accessible to our parks, both to the renovated baseball field and to Key Worth Stadium as well, and to the basketball field. So I'm asking, on behalf of Mayor, Councilmen, if you can please reconsider, maybe re-motioning, and try to bring that resolution back and vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
On the agenda today is the approval of the 1.5 million year mark from the state of Michigan. My hope was that the subcommittee would, consistent with Councilman Rafi, Samir, and Musa, would meet here, hopefully in the next week or so, to try and hash out exactly which alleys we're going to do with that 1.5. We do have another one on the horizon too that we're anticipating getting. So I'm optimistic that we're going to get most of the alleys that the councilmen have signaled, maybe not all of them, but most of them, and we can see what we can do, and then obviously we'll work. Those alleys that the gentleman pointed out are actually on those lists already. So I'm very optimistic that within, maybe not this year, but pretty soon, those will happen.
Thank you. What, can I ask a question?
Not really.
Not really supposed to.
Not really, sorry.
Maybe after. You can communicate.
Derek Call, did you want to speak now? We have a mark at the end of the meeting.
Well, just two seconds.
Did you want to? Come on. You have three minutes.
Good evening to the city council and the mayor and all the department heads. My name is Derek Hill. I'm a legislative assistant to Commissioner Martha G. Scott. I know I've been to a number of meetings, but I just wanted to introduce myself to you. If there's anything that the commissioner can do for the city of Hamtramck or its residents, please feel free to contact our office at 313-224-0878. And then also, yesterday, we had a very successful coffee hour at the Main Street Restaurant. And the commissioner has those coffee hours every month in Hamtramck at Main Street. And I would like to invite everyone here or councilmen to come. And we have our next coffee hour on February the 24th at 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM over at the Main Street Restaurant. So I'd love to, you know, if you have any concerns or issues relating to county government, you know, I'd love to see you there and have some breakfast with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one email from Charles Blackwell. "Good evening, Hamtramckans. Mayor Gallup should face public criticism for ICE raids that occur in Hamtramck. Mayor Gallup fully endorsed and supports President Trump's cruel and unusual immigration policies." And then I did get an email from Angela Gonzalez regarding the parking meters. I just want to make it public notice that we do have the town hall meeting on Tuesday, so she wants to take her comment there. I don't know if she missed in the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to make a note of that again. So if anybody has any comments in regards to public meters or the parking meters, next Tuesday here at 6 o'clock.
I believe that one came after the deadline.
Correct, yes. It came after the deadline, but I just wanted to point that out. And that's all for public comment.
All right, thank you. You can wait until you do the report, maybe.
And just, I just want to address the bringing this question. So we were invited as state officials to the inauguration. So we represent the city when we go there. Last year, we were invited to the White House during Biden administration as elected officials as well, all of us here, except Councilman Khalid wasn't, he was overseas, and the same thing happened. Every time the council, the elected officials go to a meeting, an MML meeting or something, or a conference, the city pays for them. I have been avoiding all these meeting and conferences to save money for the city. I never went to any of them, except maybe one in the first year, because I found that they are not very productive. I can learn on my own more than attending and wasting time there. So I save the city a lot of money when I don't go for the hotel, for the trip, or for the course. We don't get paid in vacations like the chief gets, you know, for the city manager. So we get like, every city council member gets $240 a month. They still want them to pay for these events and stuff. That's not fair. And when we asked for rates for the city elected officials, the residents did not approve it for them. So that's why we can't find people running for the city council, because it's a waste of their time. And, I mean, unless you are really passionate about serving the people, you will come and sacrifice your time. I personally don't care about the rates. I make enough money in my job. I actually took two days off since I became the mayor from working at the clinic, so I'm losing money to serve the people. I could have afforded my own trip and hotel, but maybe others couldn't. Or, you know, so that, just to clarify, we were thinking about making the mayor a full time at the city council here, so we can really, you know, utilize our skills and time to serve the people. Because at this time, the way we do it, we are busy with our full-time jobs, and we cannot utilize all our times and skills to serve the city the way it should be. I mean, we are doing our best, but we can't. I mean, I have a lot to offer to the city, but unfortunately, I'm busy with my job at the clinic, and I can't, you know, use all my time and skill to serve the city. And if I leave my job, I'll end up in the street, you know, not being able to pay my bills. But hopefully, something can be done about recruiting some qualified people to run for positions here, because we really can't find some people. It's very hard to find someone with integrity and commitment to serve the people. I'm telling you the truth. I don't know if I'm leaving or not at this point, but it's very hard to find people running for this position at this time. I know you announced to run, maybe.
If you leave.
We'll see. Hopefully, we'll hear something over the next month. So that's just to clarify this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we move to the consent agenda, and this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have the first one approved of minutes from the January 14, 2025, during the city council meeting. B, approval of two voice registers for date ended in January 28, 2025. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending in January 28, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
All right, thank you. And with that, we move to the new business, and we have the first resolution, 2025-09, acceptance of grant between the state of Michigan's Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity and the city of Hamtramck.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is an easy one. This is $800,000 that we received for the fire truck. It was by State Senator Stephanie Chang and Representative Ayash sponsored it, and this is simply the Honorable Body just accepting the money.
Any discussion, any question?
No, sir.
Go ahead and vote, please.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-09 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2025-10, approving urban first reading program community partner bid award.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is another aspect of that large grant we got for the trees. This is part of it, all grant funded, and Isabel's here to speak on it.
So this is the second of third, of second of three contracts that we'll bring to you for approval after reviewing different bids. And this component, it covers the community education and engagement portion of this grant that we're required to roll out for the community as we're planting these trees. We want to teach people about the value of the trees, how to care for them, and get the community involved in planting, because we're taking resident requests and business requests if they want trees placed close to them. So the community partner is the bid award that we're recommending you approve tonight. The community partner is responsible for overseeing and carrying out the workshops for the community, the tree planting events, procuring some of the trees to be planted by youth and community members during those events, and also coordinating our community advisory board, which is going to take a look at the plan that the Arboretms creates for us about how to improve our tree canopy in the city. So we're gathering stakeholders for that, and they'll be working with the community partner and the contractor planting the trees as well. We received two bids for this award, both at the maximum cost allowed in our grant budget, and we're recommending to award this to Friends of the Rouge after review. They're a local entity that has a lot of experience with similar programs and tree planting initiatives in Dearborn and Redford that required a lot of community engagement, a ton of extensive education programming over about a 40-year span in southeast Michigan. So we're confident it'll be a great partner for us. And I have a representative of Friends of the Rouge here as well. If you'd like to come, I can introduce Ashley to you. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much. I'm Ashley Flintoff. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Rouge, and we are really, really excited at this opportunity. Like Isabel said, we've had a lot of success working with communities throughout the Rouge River watershed, especially in southeast Dearborn and in Redford specifically with tree plantings and working with the local schools and Houses of Worship and community members to improve the urban canopy. And there's, I don't have to tell you the number of benefits of urban canopy it provides for the city. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Where's, where are you located in Dearborn?
So our headquarters is in Plymouth, but we cover the entire Rouge River watershed, which is 48 communities. It's almost 500 square miles, so it branches across Wayne, Washtenaw, and Oakland County.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Mr. Mayor, Isabel, so where are you planting these trees? Do you have like pre-planned?
It's not pre-planned. That's the purpose of the Arboretms and the Program Coordinator position that you've approved the bid award for already. So they'll be doing a survey and inventory of all of the trees in the city to figure out where the gaps are in the canopy after just like where the tree cover is lacking. And then, based on resident requests and business owner requests, they'll identify the appropriate type of tree to place in the appropriate place. So community engagement will be super important in that, and it's a good thing that we don't have a plan yet, because it'll be a better result moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Means my time's up.
We can vote on that.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-10 approved.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-11, approving acceptance of the fiscal year 2025 state earmark for citywide alley and sidewalk repairs.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is another grant acceptance. This one primarily came from Representative Ayash with the assistance of Councilman Samir, who made a trip to Lansing to get this. And this is 1.5 million that hopefully this Honorable Body can help us decide what's going to pave next. So it's a pretty easy pass on this one.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Councilman Hassan.
Regarding Mr. Abdul Malik's question, I may apply here. So subcommittee will decide based on safety, emergency, a pretty couple of, you know, very bad situation, all those things together, they would consider like a priority basis, number one, number two, number three, and it's come to the council, and we approve it. So of course, they're going to consider what you say about the, by the park, by the park, and looks our beauty and safety, people go there. Of course, they will think about it.
And I also forgot one main point. It's the administration will be putting us.
Maybe you should sign another card for the second round of public vote. Yeah, please.
The same bar.
I got you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you can just mark the second round, and then you can have up to three minutes. Do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
I mean, I can add one minute for him.
If you want, yeah.
It seems like he has a lot.
The mayor's got you.
With that, I think we can vote, unless someone else has any comment.
Yeah, I guess more question. Do you have subcommittee from 10 years, 10 now, for Rebert Alley?
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question if you.
10 years, from 10 years, I work in for alley for the whole city of Hamtramck, not a special location, not a special location. And I start from my ideal for that one. We did the whole Hamtramck, start Yusuf Kambo and Conan, Kenny, Holbrooke. We didn't have some subcommittee. Was the confused when we repaired those? I don't know what happened.
Well, I think, I mean, at this point, I can see that they will get repaired, that they are priority at this time. I don't think, the argument now between the city council members is whether we can include all the alleys that are added by them or not with the amount of money that we have.
You still have, you still have enough for the amount. You still have it.
Yeah, that's good. So that means we'll cover all the alleys. We are hoping that we can. It shouldn't be a problem, I think. I mean, I'm not adding any alleys, although there is a lot, but I know we can't cover all of them. I was advocating for the commercial alleys more than residential. But these two, I can see they are priority, as you say, the visitors use them, the kids next to the park. So I don't think there should be a problem. I mean, but maybe the reason we have the committee is because there's disagreement about, you know, which alley should be repaired.
Somebody, excuse me, somebody they open, they're confused. Somebody they open, they're confused with the community. I have to do this and this. Before, they didn't have it. We can write that one, that's a go-getting, still inside in Hamtramck. Somebody they opened, they're confused inside.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I will say that Councilman Samir has been championing alleys for a long time. There's no question there. He's kind of been in that corner. That's kind of been one of his campaign things. He's been doing it. And there are other councilmen that have some concerns on some other alleys. They like to get in the mix, but at the end of the day, we're going to do our best to get them all done. You know, we do have more grant money coming. We're always applying for more. We're always, you know, going to the feds and the state and seeing what we can do and be creative. But, I mean, if we don't get them all done in one swipe, at some point, we're gonna, and it's not going to be in the distant future. Hopefully, it'll be in the near future. But we're going to try and get everything Councilman Samir wants, everything Councilman Rafi wants, everything Councilman Musa, because they're the subcommittee, and then all the other needs, and hopefully we'll get it all done.
And we did the other one before. You have some confused before? The whole Yusuf Kambo, the whole Conan, and Kenny, and Holbrooke. You have some confused from the councilor of the community? Nobody. I write down to do this and this and this, still inside in Hamtramck. When we did in the south or the north, west side and inside, still inside in Hamtramck.
So, Mr. Mayor, I recommend to subcommittee to make a visit to the old city and look at the alleys instead of getting your own preference, and see which one is more important. And make a combination of business and residence, because we have to prioritize our business at least two.
I agree. I mean, this shouldn't be a one-person decision. That's, I mean, we have to take input from all the council members. I mean, I know that Councilman Samir prioritizing this for a long time. We appreciate that, and that's why I'm saying your alleys would be a priority. But it doesn't mean that we should ignore everybody else's input or concern. But I'm sure we can reach an agreement at common ground to get things done. I mean, it shouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Before final approval, it's come to the council meeting anyway. So that time, no matter what, we can, we can vote for it. So board will decide which alley is going there. So I agree with Mr. Mohit Mamuth also. And Mr. Sumari fight for to bring those monies. Thank you. But like Mohit Mamuth said the other day, Councilman Abu Musa also said some of the alleys are very bad. So that will go together, look for all the alleys, what alley is named to us, and that will bring to the priority to us, and we could be agree, we could be disagree.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025 is approved.
Thank you. Next one is the resolution 2025-12A, approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck zoning ordinance text amendment, chapter 155.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, these are zoning amendments and simply the first reading. I have Isabel here to speak more to the recommendations.
Hello again. So for the past several months, CED has been discussing with the Planning Commission and the Building Department, these revisions to the zoning ordinance that we're happy to present tonight. This is, again, the first reading and your resolution that we're recommending you make will set a public hearing and a second reading for the first council meeting next month. I'm going to talk through the first proposed change first, and then take questions about that, and then the second one afterwards, and any questions there as well. So the first one is regarding this 90% facade building material requirement in our commercial districts. It sets, as of now, five materials that have to make up the vast majority of what the front of people's buildings look like. And there aren't a ton of options there. It's only five. And part of our job is to review the plans that the Building Department receives to see and make sure that the building materials used are what they're supposed to be using, and that they're long-lasting and good for our buildings. But we also encountered quite a bit this past year instances where property owners were unable to afford certain materials or other materials weren't available. So we did a survey of 10 different communities of our approximate same size to see what materials they were using. And we ended up, after discussion with the Planning Commission, bringing seven new materials here, all options recommended to us again by a contracted planner. And so we ask for you to vote to bring those changes to a second reading. And if anyone has questions about the building materials themselves specifically, I can answer those as well.
Do I have more questions? No, sir.
So then, the second one, the second change is not in commercial, but in residential districts. We get a lot of requests before the Zoning Board of Appeals from folks who want to either expand their home into their backyard further, which encroaches on that rear setback. That's the limit, or the amount of feet that you can have between the back wall of your house and the alley. And we know that we're a really dense city, and we also have to figure out how to promote density and development responsibly and limit flooding as much as we can. So building John Yang just specifically, and I thank him for coming to the Planning Commission and talking with us about this, talked about different impacts that increasing lot coverage and like the size of these homes could have on runoff and sewer and different stormwater concerns for flooding. And we reached this recommendation, which the Planning Commission accepted and brings to you today, to allow residents to expand their homes an additional 10 feet at the back, so 20 feet setback, about a 75% lot coverage. And they can go an additional five feet and have a 15-foot setback if, in working with the Building Department, they remove some concrete that might be causing more runoff and flooding in their backyard, or implement other water retention measures to try to capture water so it doesn't flood as much, a number of different options. So we think that this is something that the residents will appreciate, but also, we're doing it in a way that is safe and takes into consideration the flood prevention efforts that we really need to. So I welcome your questions about that as well.
Any questions? All right. I think we can vote on that.
Councilman Alsmary?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafi?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-12A approved.
Thank you. Next one is the one that was added by Councilman Sedman to, resolution would be true at 2025-13, to add resolution to increase city managers' pay by 15%.
How far?
I mean, second, any second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we move to discussion.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I can't stop favor of this resolution, there is the couple of reason. We had a discussion with the city manager, what you guys heard last council meeting, what I said. When you have done in common sense law, performance review, after performance review, couple of things you have to do. Either you have to counseling, or you have to take the action, or you have to give the raise. There is the common sense law, and that is the law follow everywhere in the organization. Same thing is happening in my organization. So, we are public servant. After discussion, I brought the resolution for suspension. It's not only alone my decision. I don't want to say more than that. So it did not go pass. And I have a, lots of call came from Arab community, asking the question because they know me from 2000. I was answering those questions. Again, we are public servant. Maybe I'm thinking the person is not doing the good job. Some other side resident may be seeing he's doing good job or okay or improvement. One of the public comment also came here, he's doing good job. I could be wrong too. So, I consider those thing because I have to listen to my residents. The other reason also, if I compare salary of the city manager, not max, salary of the Hamtramck city manager is less than school board superintendent, a lot less than that. And also, is the senior citizen plaza appointed director, his salary is higher than our city manager. So inflation rate, all at the thing. And before we hire Max Gavrino, we put in the Michigan municipal league newspaper every hire advertisement. There is the, one was interested to come, and me and Sumari, councilman, we made and don't want to come. So there is the couple of reason that told us your salary is very low. So the other hand, one of the complaint about the city manager not coming on time. Here is the my thought, I'm thinking, if we despair to survive, somebody have to do the second job, maybe to survive, second job cannot give the extra time here. So if we raise very close to the other department, like a school board, any other city, very close to that, maybe that person don't have to do another job, come on time, or pay the full attention to the Hamtramck city. And also, in case, if we let our city manager go, if we go that advertisement, again, if his salary is not that up to there, then nobody going to apply it. So you're not going to get hypothetically, not even good city manager. So all those consideration, I'm supporting this resolution. Mr. Sedman brought to like a 15%. It's not the final decision, we can discuss. And no matter what, we have to give the city manager raise because by contact. Contact has the percentage, that's why he brought it, maybe, very low percentage. So we can go in somewhere in the middle, or if everybody agree, we can go up to 15%. So due to that, I'm supporting this resolution. This is, that is the description, explanation I have up to now. Maybe later on, if any more description or explanation need to be done. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Hassan. One thing that I want to clarify, I mean, I have no doubt that the city manager deserve a raise. But the way, the process you are doing it, in the last meeting, you wanted to fire the city manager. Now you come up with a raise, it's your resolution, I know that, it's not Sedman's resolution. So you make us look like a punch of cloud running the city. What should we tell the public when you give them unacceptable in your evaluation? And then you wanted to fire him? And now you come because you are mad at your city council members that didn't support your resolution? You come to, we need to run the city in a logical, professional way, not... You guys spent 95 times of talking to each other about your own problems, about constant conflicts with each other, and you talk about the interest of the city, of the residents only 5% of the time. And that's, that's makes me, I am supportive of giving him a raise, but not through the games you are doing. I mean, I'm sorry to say that. Let me finish, please. You were already, I begged you last time not to suspend Max. Didn't I, when you told me a few minutes before the meeting? No, no, you said two weeks, I said, I told you, please?
Two hours ago.
No, 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 you told me before the meeting.
It is not personal.
Don't interrupt me, please, let me finish.
Mr. Tony?
Let me finish.
If you don't mention my name, criticize cannot be.
Let me finish.
Criticize cannot be, talk about the resolution.
I'm talking about the resolution.
Cannot talk, criticize, you are the one did it.
Let me finish, don't interrupt me. The way you are running the, doing things is not the appropriate way. Now, you are mad at three city council because they didn't support you. You want 180 degree to the opposite side, saying, okay, I'm not going to fire him, but I'm going to give him raise, so I can piss the other people. I am in favor of giving him raise, but not in your, through these games that you are doing. I'm sorry, we need to serve the people in a, you know, in an appropriate way. I told you, we spend 90 times, 90% of the time talking about our own problems here. And only 5 or 10% about the city problem. And that piss me off too, because we are wasting our time, you know, not thinking, not putting the interest of the residents first. So again, I am not, I am, probably I'm the only one who gave him a reasonable evaluation. And I, I know it's minor issues that he was, he needed to improve and like attendance and other stuff. There is no major issues, I know that. But I need to be consistent in our resolutions and what we do. So I am supportive of giving him a raise, but not the way you are doing it, Councilman Hassan. That's my only concern.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We already used five minutes, but go ahead for a couple.
That's why I say, so, resolution I request through system. This is the council meeting. Council member has the right to bring the resolution. You decline. I tried to bring the proper resolution, you decline. After you decline, it came to this way.
Why didn't you ask me last week, last meeting to add the resolution?
No, it cannot be.
You chose to...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
You chose to surprise us.
Mr. Chair, please, before Friday, anybody can bring any resolution.
I know, I refused, I admit to it.
So again, you mentioning me, angry, I angry with the other council member. There was not anger. There is the process you have to follow. Either you suspend, I suspend with, with the pair. With the pair to correct him. I'm not saying he's 100% good.
You said he gave him 30 days, he didn't improve even.
He did improve, 100%.
You said he did that last time, and that's why you suspended him.
No, he did, go ahead video, he did improve.
Well, I believe he did improve.
Why you are the one is the making problem? If he want to doggy, give him raise, go ahead, he bring the resolution, we support you.
I will do it, not in your way, not in your game.
It's going to be the, maybe my way, very soon.
No, not in your game.
Thank you.
Councilman Rafai?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend this resolution and change a percentage on whatever is on that contract. So, Mr. City Attorney, can you tell us what's on that contract to give him a raise? What percentage is it?
Sorry, it's 5%, I believe. It's between 3 and 5%.
It's 3.
3.
And then I want to amend...
I think it's between 3 and 5, I think it's up to you guys.
3 to 5.
I want to amend this resolution to 3%. Whatever is on the contract to give him a raise. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair?
We need to vote on the...
No, they can discuss.
No, we can discuss, okay, go.
So, 3% raise. I just want to give you guys little bit. Okay, so you guys not bringing, no action, nothing, we all agree to give him raise, it's okay? That's all I'm saying.
So the 3% is automatic?
Automatic, that's why I'm saying, I'm going there.
I think that's right, I said 3%.
Yeah, 3% is, he don't have to come to us. According to the contract, he can tell the finance director and pay already a start. It is auto. So, to bring the higher, that is the one came to here. It's not that we are given 15%. Bring the discussion to go and talk about it. I think 3% is not fair, Mr. Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have this, thank you. So, because of the inflation, I understand many companies giving raise to their, you know, CEOs or whatever. 3% is automatically raise that I understand is on contract. But we are to be just fair and, you know, just minimize the argument among ourselves. We have to look at our city, we about to losing our 4.4 million dollars a year in the year. We're not planning to extend our parking meter contract anymore. So there is a $200,000 lose every year. What are we going to come up with this money? And city manager, when he get this job, he knows which city is getting the job. It's not a one of the city, it's not a Birmingham, it's not a Stirling Drive, or it's not a Troy Warren, it's a big city, big income sources. So I would like to amend it to this 5% if it's okay, I mean, little above 3%. We still appreciate this job, and that's minimize this issue.
So are you saying add 2% to the, to the automatic 3, making it 5%?
Yeah, it's fine.
But first, we need to vote on the 3%. We can't amend the motion again.
That's true, she's right.
We need to, I'm sorry, we need to finish the 3% vote on it.
Well, I didn't say 3%, I said whatever the contract is.
Yeah, he did.
So it's 3%. Like I said, we can give him 5%. Whatever the contract is.
He can amend, he can amend his motion.
I think then, if the contract says 3 to 5, who decides on 3 or 5?
It says 3, I believe, but the extra choose.
Well, let's first hear, let's hear the input of the other council members and then decide, finalize our decision. The Councilman Abu Musa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to give me the opportunity. And thank you, Councilman Sedman, to bring this resolution. At this moment, I just go back few, few days ago, when I put, when we put the survey for the city manager. Mr. Mayor was there, myself and few other councilmen was there. And our city attorney published this market sheet or result sheet to every, every of those councilmen. I hope, now I feel proud myself. I was not unjustified, I was not unfair, and I do best of my knowledge for the marks, whatever our city manager deserve it. And some clowning games happening, I don't know, go back behind these things. But I suggest, our city manager working really hard, but he need to be improved, whatever we suggested. And I'm watching, he's working with this for improvement. At this moment, Councilman Sedman bring the resolution, bring the proposal for 15%. It's a small town, 2.2 square mile, we don't have a big income, but we have a residential income there. Taxes there only, 15% we cannot afford it. And automatically, we do the 3%, 3 to 5, 3% for the increases. So I'm, my suggestion, at least you can meet many of those. 15 and 3% can meet like 7, 8%. This is a winning situation. We do not hurt him real badly, and we, this is the much I can, maybe this is the much we can afford this community and this city. We have a, my other colleague in discussion with this, whatever we can conclude, I'm agree with this. But my proposal, 78%.
Well, I think... Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt quick, wait a second? I think the review have done thus anonymous, we should not talk about on the council meeting. Because review taken by the attorney, he summarize, he send it, his report to the city manager, and he did his report to city officials. So we should not bring this discussion in council meeting, because that now is saying who giving it what. I know that this is appropriate to...
No, I mean, I, maybe he's talking about himself, but as long as you don't talk about the others. And at the same time, because we see some contradiction and some, you know, conflict about the evaluation and the outcomes of the evaluation, and that's not a reasonable thing. I mean, we have to be consistent.
Mr. Chair, that's the one. I'm so sorry, my colleague interrupt me to...
No, that's only...
Everybody, all those six council, city manager, attorneys, mayor also get this email. And this the email make, three, four councilmen together make the decision outside of the council meeting. This last council meeting does not come up from one person's mind. Councilman Hassan already proposed, already discussed it. The proposal he bring it here, he's not alone in this proposal, lot of people behind it. Mr. Mohit Mamuth, it is not appropriate you are telling me. But I'm this council at least 12, 11, 12 years. I know what is appropriate, what is not appropriate. I hope you're going to learn from there also. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Well, guys...
If I could just mention that, just between the confusion between 3 and 5.
Yeah.
I looked at a previous one drafted the contract that had 5, and the final contract has 3. That's where my confusion is, so, it is 3.
Well, I personally find, I mean, I told you, I'm in support of what, you know, the city manager deserve a raise. And I think, I think my personal opinion is 3% is the automatic raise. And I think your suggestion, Councilman Musa, is reasonable. It can be something, I think the city can afford an extra 3, 4,000 dollars. I mean, it's not an issue. Just, I want everybody to walk out of this meeting happy, including the city manager. We don't want to approve something that's not going to make him satisfied. I mean, I don't want to make, I want to approve something that's, that also that's going to make Councilman Hassan happy. So, yeah, we have to be reasonable and, you know, based on the resources that we have and what we can afford. So, that's my opinion. I think we can meet halfway, like Councilman Musa said, maybe 7.5 or so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, please, it is like you said, 3, 4,000 is not that big, but it's made to him to more focus on and little happy. So 7.5, I think I can, I can go for it. So, matter of fact, my things, what I'm getting is more than that. But if you agree, everybody agree, 7.5, I'll support 7.5, Councilman Hassan.
I asked, you know, for extension of time, so I can negotiate for better than that, but you guys rushed and you wanted to get on this meeting, so I think...
It's done, it's done.
That's what we can do at this time, and hopefully, if we get more resources for the city from Washington DC, then we can add more.
I can add more, I mean...
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes, Councilman.
Can we table this resolution? We need to take time to figure it out, because what we have, 3%, we need to table it.
We still have to, we can't talk about table?
So I think somebody said 7.5, if...
That is sound.
Mine's still on the table.
Right.
Mine's still on the table.
Yours is still, that's why you can't bring another...
So you have to vote on the 3% or he can retract his...
Or he can retract the G to...
And then change it.
Why did table it, why did table it make free clear?
Mr. Mayor?
Right, yours is, he motioned to modify it.
Why did table it make free clear?
Mr. Mayor, can I modify my resolution to 5%?
So he's rescinding his and then modifying it to 5%?
Okay, any support?
Yes.
Who supported, Councilman Sumeri?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we go.
Now, we have a discussion.
We can discuss the same, but.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, I'm requesting, Mr. Mayor Protam. You came up to five. Five to seven point five is not that far. So, former Mayor Protam already propose seven point five. Me, seven point five. Mr. Mayor also kinds of agree seven point five. Is this anyway, you can reconsider to go the seven point five, please.
No, sir.
We can vote on it, and if it doesn't pass, somebody can motion again.
Make a vote for number.
This coming at one point embarrassing, we are auctioning. We should straightforward.
That's fine, there's rules, let's just vote.
We should vote for it, you know, also we have to see what in our community are looking for, what our citizens are looking for. What kinds of facilities they are getting. You know, we can't just think about ourselves, our own personality, and, you know, who cannot get say what and get more close to another person. That's not the issue. We should come up to a fair thing, so that is which is fair to the city, which is fair for the residents, which fair for our income sources. We can't just raise everything, hire everything, and go after people with the code enforcement, police department, collecting the money. We have to think about this too.
So, obviously, we have to.
That's what we say, we're gonna table it, take your time.
We're gonna vote for it.
I think you had a vote on, Councilman, he votes motion. And then if it passes, if it passes, if it doesn't, you can, somebody else can motion.
Okay, guys.
Or then we vote on.
It seems like you guys gonna put me as the decision maker, I mean.
You're not saying no to the raise, you're just saying no to.
No, that's not the question.
If he's a tiebreaker.
We'll find that out.
Yes.
Let, he can vote.
I know, I'm saying, it's gonna be my decision now, which I was hoping that we all come on board.
If you do the votes and see.
All right. Councilman Hassan.
For five percent, right?
Correct.
No.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Sadman.
No.
Councilman Mahmud.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
I know.
No, we must vote for five percent.
That's why I asked for time to negotiate outside, so we can be on board and make it. But I think at this time, whoever I make unhappy should pay for our dinner tonight.
We're not voting on the resolution.
I know, but I wanna give them more, so I'm definitely gonna say no.
Okay.
So, three people are mad now. So.
I'm not mad for that.
So, that's why I'm saying, you know, if you give me discussion, time to discuss and negotiate, we could have been all on board and make everybody happy. But, I mean, I would say, I would say no, and just support a little bit more for Max.
Mr. Chair.
So, I'm sorry, can I please pause one moment? It goes back now to the fifteen percent.
No, seven point five.
Seven point five, he's gonna motion seven point five.
But as of right now.
Right, he's about to motion.
I bring the motion to seven point five. Second.
Are you didn't, did you say?
Yes, seven point.
I can just say what you want.
Yeah, I bring the motion for seven point five percent.
Okay.
There is for the city manager.
Discussion or vote?
At this point, they discuss, you can just go ahead and vote.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
No.
Councilman Mahmud.
No.
Councilman Sadman.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Resolution twenty twenty five point thirteen, approving city managers, seven point five percent salary increase approved.
All right, solid resolution. So, the city manager will pay for our dinner tonight.
Yes.
And tomorrow.
See, we spend time.
With that raise, dollar money.
We spend time how to make increase salary. But when we figure out how to repair somewhere, how to make safe, nobody asking for that one.
All right.
No safety, no repair and anything.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
We still haven't voted on the resolution though. We voted on amending the resolution.
Okay.
I missed that.
Yeah, so we voted to amend, I even missed that, that's why I said, so we, let me rephrase that. Amendment to Resolution twenty twenty five thirteen approved at seven point five percent. Now, we're voting to approve the amended resolution of twenty twenty five thirteen. I need a motion, please.
Make your motion, second.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
No.
Councilman Mahmud?
No.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Amended Resolution twenty twenty five thirteen approved at seven point five percent salary increase for city manager.
All right. With that, we come to the end of our new business, and we move to the reports. So, I'll start with my report. I would like first to thank everyone who attended tonight's meeting. Thank you for sharing your concerns with the city council and mayor. We definitely take everything, you know, seriously when we hear about issues in the city. And I hope, and, you know, that we spend most of our time talking about the concerns of the residents and the issues that we have in the city. Not about, not to spend most of our time in a constant conflict with each other. That's, that's the thing that makes me upset. And that's why I was a little bit upset tonight, and I apologize if I raised my voice. But I would like to be, for our city council to be professional and, you know, committed to serve the people. And that's what they hope for from us. I mean, they voted for us, they elected us to serve them. And we accepted this role to, you know, and took this responsibility, so we can serve the people and put their interest first. So, with that, I hope that we can, we can put our priorities, you know, the interest of the people first. Last week, we went to Washington DC to attend the inauguration. It was not just a regular invitation, it was a state elected official invitation. And, you know, my invitation was supposed to be in the premier section, and when, before they changed the order of the, because of the court. So, it's supposed to be as close as possible to the president. Then, everything changed, and we accepted in any seating. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but we can say that they still appreciate our support. The president did not forget about us. They designated a special person from the team to help us and walk us around for twelve hours, from the morning until the end of the ball at night. One person would walk us, expedite entry, anywhere we go, we don't have to take a line. We don't have to stay in the court, because we have some person with, you show the ID, and we pass everybody. So, that's why we represented our city. We were in the first row in the second hall that they designated, not in the capital. Like I said, it doesn't matter, but we represented our city. While we were there, at the same moment, you know, Councilman Abu Musa made it to the New York Times in a minute. We looked, and he was there, you know, his picture with Councilman Sadman, and I was next to him, and they skipped me. They didn't know I am the mayor, so. But again, it was, I think, we met a lot of elected officials from different places. And it was, it's a one in a lifetime, it doesn't happen always. So, it's not like we are traveling every month or so. And like I said, we were invited by the administration of Biden to eat party last week, last year. And we went there as well to represent the city. And with that, you know, I explained before that we thank those people here in the city council for putting their time. And, you know, taking all this, you know, the stress that we get from the residents about, you can never make everybody happy. But we are doing our best to serve with integrity and honesty with, you know, and at least I'm talking about myself, and I trust my city council. We get along, we argue here sometimes, heated argument, but we go out and we get along with each other. We don't take things personal. And that's why I expect Councilman Hassan to invite us for dinner tonight, you know, so. And with that, I thank you again, everyone who showed up to tonight's meeting. I understand there's some concerns, especially from Councilman Hassan about the coming election, which is coming soon. What is the window open for registration, is it?
Deadline for registering to be on the ballot.
Oh, go ahead.
Twenty one, is it?
Resume should be February, go ahead, you said.
Is April twenty second.
That's the last day to register, right?
To, yes, for to submit your affidavit.
Okay, yeah. So, with that, I understand that.
No, so, please, one moment. If you need to know the information, the charter says you can't be indebted to the city, so you have to make sure you're not indebted to the city. No taxes owed, no all bills paid to the city. Once that's confirmed, you can apply, and your affidavit of identity should be submitted last day, April twenty second. Which then gets submitted to Wayne County, which they do their own background check to make sure you're, they fulfill their charters on what the rules are. And then they get back to me if you are approved or not. There is a charter that was amended in the election a couple of years ago, that says that somebody that wants to run for a certain position, it's different than that what they do. They have to withdraw, I believe it was sixty days prior to the deadline of the application fee, which that turns out to be, I think, I know we discussed that, I don't have the exact date. It's like the end of February, I think, February twenty second or something along those lines. That's a deadline to submit your resignation.
Yeah.
Resignation for your position. And if you, if you, let's say, for example, if a city council member wants to run for mayor, they have to submit the resignation. If they become mayor, they become mayor. The fourth person in line to win the election fills that position, and they fulfill that term, okay? If they do not win mayor, their seat gets disqualified, gets removed also January first, and that fourth person also takes that place.
Yeah, I'm only concerned about the timing, not anything else. Because if I decide not to run, I wanna give them enough time to resign on time, so they can catch the deadline. But I'm not sure yet, I haven't decided, and I may put my name on the ballot. And until now, nothing is confirmed, but I will update you as soon as possible. And hopefully, I mean, the opportunity is there for anyone to run, not just the city council members. I heard there are some people who wants to run, including our friend here and others too. So, everybody's welcome to, we need public servants, and, you know, that's something that's, it's very hard to find, you know, people with, like I said, with integrity and commitment. Who wants to run for public positions and have time, unfortunately. Maybe the system that we have has something to do with that. But hopefully, we can find some, you know, some more people to run for public service here. With that, I think nothing else I can talk about, but I wanna thank you all again. And we will move to the Mayor Protam paper, Councilman Rafai.
Mr. Chair, I wanna thank you everybody for coming here tonight. Also, I wanna address to our residents in City of Amtramic, as I have got calls, that somebody around the streets is, and I'm presented as a police officer for the city of Detroit. So, if anybody gets a knock on the door, that there are police officers, you know, from the city of Detroit, we do not open the doors, and call our police department. I wanna inform our chief, I think you have, get that information from someone that sent you, they came knock on their house. So, there's a clear video of, you know, of their face and all that. And there's a place in plate where they went to a foreign street, and they knocked a couple of houses, acting like they're Detroit police officers, trying to get report and finding out about theft with the four trucks that's lumping in the whole room. So, hopefully, the chief will get that address and find out if he is a real police officer or not. But the way I seen the video, it's a little fishy. So, I'm just informing everybody, please be safe out there, go open your doors, until, you know, you get more information again. Anybody knocks, make sure who they are. If they say they're police officers, you gotta call our department and to make sure that they are, you know, real police officers. That'll be all, you guys have a good night and be safe.
Thank you. Council report, please. Anyone wants to?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I would like to invite you all for dinner tonight, no problem. Second, my residents, this is the very, very worst job ever I see in my life. But still, we are willingly doing that. The amount we are getting paid is nothing. We listen to the public, we bring to the city hall. So, let's say, maybe every week, I have a complaint to the city manager, at least ten to fifty. It's not my complaint. When I heard, I have a double fencing ordinance approved, this council body, somebody get the ticket. They come to me, I have to call Max. Okay, so it's not my personal thing I'm doing. When I have a residence, light is not there. Two month, light gone, no light, I have to come to the Max government. I should not, I directly don't go to the public department head if I call him, so I have to call him. So, so calling him is not my personal interest, is the course residence. And the things I brought it today, February, that is the residents calling me, okay? So, again, right now, I did not call one week, one of the problem. At the corner of Carpenter and Conan, light post broke him, and nobody brought it here. I was watching, see, anybody can bring it. So, it is part of our police department responsibility. It driving all day long, and it was safety issue. It is inside work, light on. Every night I go, I mean, it's morning, I see the light, red light is right there in the, in the, in the walkway. So, all those thing, I call him, I think around two o'clock in the morning, why my street not salted yet? He answered the phone, okay? Then, the police department also driving the street. He told me, police department also can do something, and maybe he call in the morning, something is gone. It is our job, and, and the, it is sometime don't takes time. Early in the morning, sometime I have a day off, like a Saturday, I go pray. After pray, I drive the street. Before pray, I drive the street. Then I call somebody, I cannot find anybody, you wanna come to coffee with me? Let's go together. So, all those thing we do, it is, we are taking from our personal time, personal family time, and doing for people. It is not nothing personal. We are, Mr. Mayor, we are doing our best time for the resident. Let me explain you one thing. Before two thousand nine, this council used to throw the chair each other. We are not that bad yet. Okay, so what I was telling you, what I was telling you, we have argument? Yeah, politics, yeah, this seat is the politics seat. It's not, I was master degree, that's why I can this one, is the politics seats. Again, the both party between the city manager and elected official fight is not good for city. It's not good for city. He come to the point, lots of close discussion about the city, and we came to the, in the middle together. I wish city manager will take serious to do a thing, and yes, after one month, Mr. Mayor, he did. Mr. Mayor, he did, I mentioned that, he moved the building department. Mr. Goli Raffi was, was requesting. Uh, matter of fact, my request was the not eliminating the court enforcement. My request, the sum of the court enforcement abusing, misuse the power, that is the one, I want you to still look at that one. It is the people still telling about it. So, all those things, still we are good friend, still Saturday morning, me and Sumari gonna be coffee shop, so no issue, even though he beating me. I buy, he buys sometimes, so it's okay, you know, he want to be more millionaire. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, you make us proud. Uh, Washington, all those council member together, it is the history.
Thank you.
There's no question about it.
Thank you, Councilman.
No problem. Are you ready? By the way, February twenty-first is the last day to resign from the council. Ms. Clark, not all the council, who term limit, whose term end of the January, they don't have to resign. Only three councilmen.
There is nobody on term limit right now?
No, no, yeah, there's three councilmen, January, not term limit. They are, they are, they are time act for the, for the period. So, only three council member, anybody want to run for the level, they have to resign by February twenty-first. That's why I was bothering you.
Thank you, Councilman Hassan, for collection, thank you. Councilman, um, you wanna? No, 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 I was quick to say, it was just a joke about it. I don't know about the inauguration, but I could make it, make it with you guys too.
Don't cry, don't cry. After four years, you will be there, they're not gonna be there.
Yeah. Councilman, who was it going?
Thank you, everybody to come in here and join with us, share with your thoughts also. And thank you, the people who is watching us, uh, maybe in home or, or the live on Facebook. I had a really, really wonderful time with Mayor and my other colleagues in Washington DC, the inauguration of our forty-seventh President Donald J. Trumps. It is still a moment, it's the first time we can join those kind of event. And maybe the, if weather doesn't betray with us, maybe Mayor will be very close to our President Trump. And still, the way we, uh, served there, one person only with us, hundred J. Kim, right?
Jessica.
Jessica, thank you Jessica to give us time, almost ten, twelve hours, with the food and everything she needed for us, for the timing with the escort us also.
Coffee, coffee.
Coffee, and we have a really, really good time, including the ballroom also.
Yeah.
And Mr., um, city manager, or council, we debate each other and we, we come to the completion of seven point five percent. If we were ability, maybe we can go fifteen, twenty percent, but you know our ability, we cannot go that much far. But we want the best of your ability, serve the community, the way you're doing before, last twenty-four, twenty-four years. You are before than me in this community. And thank you, everybody to watching us, and I put Hamtramck fast on my thoughts and on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more report?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Smey.
Uh, thank you for everyone come to this meeting today. I'm happy to see some, a lot of people from the residents in Hamtramck. That's why I happy to see everybody come to see. Last, last two week when we have the meeting, a lot of confused. Now, this, this time, they came a second confused. I don't know, I don't know the second term, maybe they have a big confuse, you don't know. Because those people, those people, they love the politics. This politics should be, should be turned for the resident, to make the resident happy. Now, this politics to hate the resident, to hate the city, make someone is having and other people is mad. And last week, uh, the President Day, we go to high school, we see a lot of people, I'm happy to go over there. Yeah, the President Day, and thank you for everyone.
Mr. Chair, I forget one thing.
Road and Moon Day, yeah.
So, New York time, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I saw the former, uh, Mayor Protem thanking God like that. It's a so beautiful picture, and I saw that.
That's why probably is the news.
He was looking at God and thanking, thanking for you or Jessica, I don't know. And one lady control three of you guys, wow, so impressive.
That's the President's seal, you can't say, you know. I got, I got the President's seal here, you know?
It's very nice.
So.
So, well, thank you guys, thank you, everyone. Hopefully, our city will be our priority to serve, whether from here or from somewhere else. And, um, I can see that a lot of good things are coming for our community. So, keep working hard, keep the teamwork and, uh, you know, we can make our community and our city better. So, thank you so much. With that, we move back to the public comment, the second round of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a closed session after, just.
Yeah.
Two minutes?
Yes, first of all, when, uh, I don't know the mic is where, is it working?
Yes.
Congratulate, uh, city manager, but hopefully you get more grants from Washington since the mayor and three council members have good relations with this administration for the next four years. You bring more grants and should get twenty percent raise. And thank you for the seven and a half. Second thing is, Mayor, you started the wait for President Trump. I was in Washington too, by the way. And thank you for your leadership and what you did in this country for the Muslims and Arabs, and especially Yemeni Americans. But I ask you, when you said you don't want to invite the council, you guys will be invited in March to go to the White House, the White House Eftar Muslim Dinner. I hope you can convince the Trump administration to invite all council members. Don't just take the, the three that was, that supported you in the beginning, let's forget about that. We start fresh, Ramadan Eftar is for every Muslim politician, every ambassador that's Muslim and every Arab American that's a leader. And I hope you take all six, at least invite all six council members with you. And also, I want to see you to, to be a tiebreaker more often. You're the mayor. You run the city. Don't worry about the council. You could be, I mean, Karen Mijowski, Gary Zitch, and all those people that, I've been doing this for twenty-six years, they tie the, they always, they'll break tires almost twice, three times every council meeting. And I hope you can do that more now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your name? What's your last name? Kennedy?
Uh, I'm a contractor, I've been having a lot of hard time pulling permits from the city of Hamtramck. They give us a lot of hard time. Uh, it's not like the, uh, other cities, Durban, War, Detroit. Uh, just like to try to pull permit for a, uh, swap permit. Uh, I applied for it, I put, it says, uh, application fee fifty dollars and, uh, final, uh, final permit, uh, final inspection seventy-five. And then they requested for me, uh, to pull another permit for a electric. Electric is existing. So, why would I, uh, have to pay another, another hundred twenty-five dollars to, for a permit, for electric permit? So, I need to find out, or who should I speak with about this kind of issues?
City manager, please, I mean, uh, we've been hearing these complaints over and over, and I hope, uh, you can communicate with him and address that.
Just talk to him outside.
Talk to him.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so just communicate with him.
I can't even speak to him because I don't know, I'm not a building official, I don't know what he needed or didn't need. But John will definitely sort him out.
Have the melon, Eljheim?
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me time. Uh, I just forgot one main thing, it's, uh, administration building. It's right there in Roosevelt, and that's where we need to work around, is, you know, Hamtramck District, you know, Hamtramck, uh, buildings, so. I hope you guys prioritize Roosevelt in Goodson because that's where all, you know, accessibility to all parks. You guys know summertime when it comes, how full those parks are, full of kids and women and men's and of all ages. So, I hope you guys look into that and prioritize that. And, uh, about that question about the contractor behind the house, the contractor, why can't the city go after them? I pulled the permit, I paid for the permit. Why do, you know, why is it neglected? We've been putting patches, city been paying for it, but it's not fixing it, it's just Band-Aids. Can someone answer that?
I mean, from what I understand, it's four years old. I really can't speak to what was going on four years ago, I mean, I wasn't in that department. However, I mean, at this point, we're looking at just repaving the alley, so I guess it's a question of, is it worth it or not at this point? I mean, we're looking at redoing everything. So, um, probably not worth trying to track down even who it was at this point, um, assuming the records are manageable and then, you know, four years later, I mean, the time to have dealt with that would have been at least, you know, within the year, if not within the few months of it happening. But again, I can't speak to something that happened four years ago. At this point, it's probably a moot point because we're looking to pave the whole darn alley, so.
I have email chains with the previous city manager, and now I have email chain with Councilman Kellin, uh, forward. And, uh.
I mean, if you want to send me the old email chain, I mean, it might shed some light on it. If it's, if it's still the current contractor of ours, it'd probably be easier, but I, at this point, I don't even know which contractor it was.
It's through the city.
Statute of limitations for these six years, I think, it's at four. So, if there is something that somebody made an error, we can, we can certainly look into going after them. If you want to, just send it over to me, I'll look into it.
Just email the chain.
Yeah, email and the chain.
Hopefully, we don't have to go that route, and hopefully, they prioritize, you know, Muslims.
Like you said, if it's a current contractor, we'll be able to figure it out like that. Otherwise, I can send a letter or something.
Uh, Matthew Piziali?
I, I withdraw my report.
Okay, that's all for public comment then.
We have a closed session, it's not going to be long.
Yeah, with that, uh, we come to the end before the closed session. So, thank you, everyone, for joining us, we're not coming back to vote on anything.
Did you give me a card?
Yeah.
What's her name?
Jenny.
Oh, the one that scratched out?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you just gave me a card that you found on the floor because her name is scratched out, right? Okay, do you mind if we?
Yeah, no problem. It won't be long.
No, it's okay, take your time.
No, that's okay. My name is Jenny, and I have been living here in Hamtramck all my, we docked our contract back. And, oh, and everybody, I'm not used to speaking in public, but anyway. Um, my question is, um, is any grant money to have my house repaired? I'm in the process of going to start, I want a repair. Since you want to make Hamtramck real beautiful, I think my house would be nice too. So, I would like to know, is any grant money available, you know, so we can get or even make a loan or something like that, you know? So, that's what I'm saying.
I can answer this. Um, I'm actually looking into, so, uh, I also represent, uh, the CED department in Dearborn Heights. They have a program there, um, where we, uh, provide loans to, you know, people that, that, uh, apply for them to make repairs in their homes that comes from HUD. And I'm actually looking into it to, to talk to Isabel, a way to add that to our city. We don't have the capability now, uh, but it's going to take some training and some, some work, but I am trying to find a way to do that.
So, we, we have done it in the past.
Right, it's been a while.
When, when money comes and it's available for us to get, we usually try to get it, but there isn't anything currently ready at this time. But there, there's plenty of houses over the years that have benefited from that, but it's a matter of if we can get it or not. If we get it, we'll definitely publicize it.
Yeah, you'll, you'll know about it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We will, uh, generally, we'll have a closed session in a minute. Uh, someone in need to use restroom or something, alright, and then we'll be back.
Mayor and the council, if, uh, would like to have some letter of your trip.
No voting, right?
Could you translate this to the live word?
Oh, here. Thirty friggin' pages, thirty friggin' pages.
Did you have to read that?
Thirty friggin' pages.
Did you have to, thirteen, I said, thirteen.
Thirty.
Thirteen.
Thirty.
Thirty what slide?